City Council meeting that we do the second Tuesday of each month. I do not have anyone to give the indication tonight, so I'm going to point to my left and ask Mr. Dickinson if he would jump on it.
Okay. Let us pray. God, as always, we give you thanks for another day of life. Those of us on the council give thanks for the privilege that we have to serve the good folks of our city. We ask that you would be with us this evening. Guide our deliberations. Give us discernment and wisdom to make the correct decisions that will benefit our people. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let the record reflect, please, that all members of council are present. I need an approval of the agenda, but prior to that, I do, I would like to waive departmental reports from this one, since we went over everything in detail last week. Would anybody make a motion?
Move to waive the departmental reports for this month.
Motion to waive by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now I need a motion for the approval of the agenda with the waiving of, the waiving of the reports, please.
I'm with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Now, the consent agenda this month is Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission minutes from January, March, DDA, DDA executive session, and CVB minutes, along with HPC. April, City Council Executive Session, DDA, and CVB minutes. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. I have a few people for public comment tonight. First, we have Mr. Pierce Giles. He was in here just a few months ago. Got to go see him at the Tuscan Lodge last week. I believe they had 81 families. You can come on up when, when I had come through the door. And he has put a letter, or asked me to put a letter at each of your seats. Pierce, thank you. How are you?
How are you all?
Great, thank you.
Just keeping an eye on you. Thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor, for coming out. I also like to say thank you to the police, Chief of Police. They both visited over at our pantry last Wednesday. I'm not going to take a lot of time. All of you board members, council members, rather, have a letter in front of you. It is stating what we have done from January 1st to this date. And you will notice that we have done 1,994 families. That's a lot of families. We have a lot of people, that's city and county. That's a lot of people. That's approximately 24,508 pounds of food that we have put out here. That's a lot of food. That's a lot of food. We have done 72 families the week before, and just last week, I did 82 families. So as you can see, it's rising. It is rising. There is a need. So any help that we can get from the community, the city, or anybody, we would appreciate it.
Now, you got the refrigerator, right?
Yes.
In the truck. To be bringing those numbers in, though, that's just amazing. And it's a machine that you have over there. I mean...
No, we don't have a truck.
You don't have the truck?
No.
That's...
We are renting a truck each time.
Okay.
We go and pick up food.
Okay.
We did get a new refrigerator and a new freezer.
Okay.
But we don't have a truck. So each time we go pick up food, we have to rent a truck. We don't have transportation, so that's money coming out that we have to allot to rent trucks with.
Right.
So we don't have transportation, no.
Well, it's amazing what you do, and I really, I appreciate it. And anybody who wants to get involved with you...
We are a nonprofit, and all of my information, contact information, anything you need, and anybody that's sitting here now that would like a copy of this, I have copies of it. If you want copies of it to see the numbers, all you have to do is see me. I have copies of this, and you can carry it.
And I'll keep, and I'll keep one at my office for anybody who may be watching online and would like to watch, or would like to read it. Okay? Thank you for coming in, Pierce. I really appreciate you. Samir? I'm just going to say Samir. Thank you for coming in.
I have a beer and wine license.
Okay.
914 North Broad Street.
Okay. And you're for the beer and wine license. Do we have that on the list? That's not on the agenda, is it?
No, not today.
I don't think we're on the agenda for that today.
Our city called me, like, come in council meetings, or...
No, sir, not this week, but if you would, reach out to me. There's my phone number. You can just take the pen. Just give me a call, and I'll make sure we get you on the next one. Okay? Or at least I'll get you in touch with the right people.
Make sure your application is in order with us. Has the application already been filed?
But the application's in?
Yeah, that application is in and has been reviewed.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it's not on this agenda, but it has been reviewed by our office.
Okay.
This is 914 Broad LLC. Yeah. It's been reviewed, so I think that it could be easy to circle back up with Heather and see what the status is on it.
Okay. Yeah, if you'll just reach out to me tomorrow, we'll handle it. Yes, sir, thank you. Billy Mitchell. Hey, Billy. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for having us, having me. I'm here speaking on behalf of Ms. Mary Rice. She owns two lots at 1362 and 1350 Waverly Way in Monroe. These lots are directly behind her house that she used to reside in on Highway 11. She's 91 years young now, and she's needing some extra money to take care of her, as we probably all will at some point at that stage of our life. She wanted to sell these lots, and I came to the city and asked them about sewer access, and was told that that wouldn't be available because of a moratorium that was implemented. So I went to the county and asked the county if they would allow the lots. They said, sure, but the health department has to approve septic systems. Well, that's where we kind of hit a wall. The health department says that can't have septic systems where sewer's available. Well, sewer's available, but it's not available because of the moratorium. So they did budge and said that we could have one lot with septic if, you know, it perks, which we think it will. But Ms. Rice is 91 years old now. She needs to sell two lots. Obviously, two lots are going to sell for more than one, and we're going to ask for an appeal that, on that moratorium, on those two lots, based on the fact these lots were recorded in 1960, when that subdivision was, was put together. And it was based on the fact that the city would provide sewer, as all the other houses in green acres are on city sewer. So that's where we're at, and I know y'all can't really give us a decision tonight, but I wanted to know where we were on this, and if we could, it would sure help Ms. Rice out to be able to sell two versus one. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if I, if I can.
Thank you, Billy. And he had sent a letter to me last week, and it's also in process of coming all out to you. So, and I knew you were coming tonight, so I'm glad, glad you talked, and I'm sure we'll discuss it. I can't say what's going to happen.
I understand.
But, but that'll be a point of discussion.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Vincent Gwen? Did I pronounce right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
I'm here for the new business. I'm opening a restaurant downtown. I'm not sure if I'm jumping the gun here, if we're going to talk about that later.
Wait, and you're here for what?
The new restaurant I'm opening up. I was told to come here as soon as...
Okay. I don't, do we have that on the agenda?
Was it another alcohol license?
Yeah, well, I did apply for that, but Heather told me to come here for new business.
We didn't receive those on the back.
I think we, I think we missed both of our beer and wine licenses. What's...
One for next month, and then I just asked them to get it with the... The 914 was supposed to be scheduled for nine, but for one, I think you're asking about your schedule for next.
Is yours Wayne Street, Wayne Street parcel?
No, it's 209 Wayne Street.
Yeah. Yeah. That one also has been reviewed, but I know that that one was set for the June council meeting. Yeah. That one's been reviewed by our office as well.
All right. Thank you for coming in. We'll see you again next month, though. I don't have any more public comments. Moving to the city administrator update, Mr. Probst.
Again, I'll dispense with updates, since you got four hours of it last week.
Do you, do you want...
Nothing new there.
Nothing else for Chris, either?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Moving to department requests. Mr. Still, 2025 Local Road Assistance Administration Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the request that I mentioned last month about a program the state introduced last year. It's the Local Road Assistance Administration Funds, tallying $253,601.76, and I'm asking approval to spend on Breedlove Drive and Davis Street. Breedlove's Drive will be the entirety of it from Alcovee down to West Spring with deep patch and overlay. Davis Street will be from South Madison to the dead end, and that would be deep patch and milling and overlay as well, totaling roughly 2.1 miles. This money does not require a match, so it's, they're going to get us at some point, but I guess it was technically free money. Just seeking your approval on that. These streets were, were derived at through using our new software, our StreetLogic software. They fell into the categories that we needed, that we put in to see how to best spend the money, and this is the product of it. Just seeking your approval on that tonight.
Sounds perfect. Thank you, Jeremy. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that one to Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the tap grant award, PI 0016630, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get my packet back up. I apologize. Anyway, we had the tap grant, which we applied for back in '28. It's going to run from North Broad Street at Marable all the way down to East Highland, then down to North Lumpkin. It's going to be a major streetscape overhaul. It's going to kind of tie in various elements of the streetscaping that we already have that we did with the LCI project and the TE project way down South Broad, and put that all together and just kind of enhance the beautification of downtown and the walkability of downtown. So we had to put that out for bid, finally, after we got GDOT approval and moved through the entire process. The bid came back right there in estimates. I think we had a delta of about $200,000 between all the bidders, so that was good. A lot of bidders. And the low bid was with Omshiv Construction LLC, $3,879,119.25. This will come from Sploes, but the best news is we're only responsible for 20% of it because it is a GDOT-administered federal grant. So that 20% take will be $775,823.85. So we are asking for your approval of this contract with Omshiv Construction LLC.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation lease agreement, Mr. Croy.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a lease agreement between the city of Monroe and New Singular Wireless or AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation. Basically, we're seeking your approval to lease out a part of the water tank that sits at Washington and Wayne Street for them to put some equipment up there to increase the signal here in Monroe. This lease agreement term is for 10 years, and it has an annual rent of $35,000. Just looking for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Croy? Any idea when they would be able to get started?
Soon as it's signed, we're going to start working on the schedule.
Jump it. I need to entertain a motion, please.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you, Chris, for working on that. Moving to new business, Language Access Plan Resolution. Beth, Logan.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a Language Access Plan Resolution that goes in conjunction with HUD funding and our CDVG redevelopment fund program with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. So basically, it names Beth Thompson as the coordinator for this LAP Language Access Program for the city of Monroe. And basically, what we'll have to do is, once we get awarded our redevelopment loan from DCA, we have to put into place a specialty language access plan for those with limited English that may need access through various federal grants and such with the city.
Any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the appointment of the personal hearing officer, Mr. Probst. Is it personal or personnel?
Whatever you want it to be. So, once again, we're going to reappoint, or we're requesting to reappoint Mr. Roy E. Mantle III with Fortin Bentley and Griffin to be our contracted personnel hearing officer as part of our personnel policies and procedures. And as you know, he hears the eventual appeals and adjudicates that for us.
Okay. Any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the resolution to appoint me as the MEAG voting delegate and Logan as alternate voting delegate, Mr. Probst.
Yeah, that's it. That's the resolution.
Is there any discussion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to Historic Preservation Member Appointment, Mr. Callender.
Thank you. There are two appointments currently that expired, actually, on May 1st, for the Historic Preservation Commission. Those positions are currently held by Jane Camp and Laura Powell. There were only one applicants for those two seats to be reappointed, were by Laura Powell herself for her seat to be reappointed. There was no applicant for the Jane Camp seat, and according to your Code of Ordinances, Jane Camp will continue to sit in that seat until there is an appointee designated in the future. So tonight, the recommendation to the city council is to reappoint Laura Powell to a term of three years that will end on May 1st, 2028, and then, as I've stated, Jane Camp will remain seated until her successor is duly appointed according to the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Any questions for Brad? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Ms. Laura Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to district items. Lee Malcolm.
Well, the rain did not hold down the crowds on Saturday. It was a wonderful event, not only in downtown, but even at the McDaniel Tishner House to end up the night, 3:00 to 5:00, I think, for the Flower, Flower Festival or Garden Party. So I'm thankful that people came out and enjoyed themselves.
I want to see those numbers. It was, it was packed all day in the rain. Ms. Crawford.
Well, it's not necessarily in my, my district, but the way we do the parks, when they use the parks, first come, first served, we need to do something better than that.
Actually...
We need to do some reserving because issues have come up with that.
Chris was putting something together, and he talked about it the other night.
Yeah, so we don't necessarily have... Yeah, so, we don't necessarily have our full reservation system in place for, for our parks right now. That's gonna be a decision this, this body would have to make. We have one for, we, we created a policy for things like fairgrounds that we have to administer in an extracurricular manner, but things that are, that are park-related, for instance, if you wanted to go to a pavilion, it's just always been a first come, first served kind of mantra. So, if that's something this council wishes to change, we're gonna have to make some major internal amendments to how we do things, probably add a little bit of staffing to make sure all that's ready to go, but that's something that can be heavily...
It needs to be done. At least reserve the pavilion that you wanna use, 'cause if you say first come, first served, I've been here hours, and someone has come up, say, they've been here, it's gonna be a problem. So, if you reserve it, it wouldn't be much of an issue.
I agree. Let's talk more about how we can do that and add that person.
Would that require staff to be present that day to manage that, to make sure the right person got it?
So, I mean, yeah, you're, you're, you're creating a whole ripple effect of, right now, we're just managing the parks in terms of keeping clean and, and making sure that they're ready for whomever wants to enjoy the day. But when we start getting into facility rentals, we're gonna have to have some on-call personnel for, you know, Saturdays, Sundays, a little bit extended times during the week, too, for afternoons, so, that's just something we're gonna have to look at, as far as what that's gonna take to make all that happen.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Ma, Maia. Anything else? Mr. Boyce? Good. Ms. Sams. Wait. Masters in kinesiology? Congratulations. Graduated on Saturday. Ms. Sams? Ms. Brown?
I have an event coming up July twenty-sixth. It is the Community Impact Day. So, every year, we do something with Gwinnett Walton Habitat, and the city has partnered again, and actually Tuscan Community Services, Pierce Giles is here, they are partnering with us this year to do a bookbag giveaway. So, that's gonna be on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two. There will be someone there to talk about estate planning, wills, powers of attorney, and heirs property, along with the health fair and screenings, and the bookbag giveaway for the kids going back.
That's fantastic. Thank you for doing that. Diamond Ministries, right?
Well, Tuscan Community Services and Habitat.
Okay. All right. Mr. Gregory.
I would like to say thanks to Electric, Fire, anybody else who's involved. That's all that I saw down there. But on Sunday, Mother's Day, on Fifth Street, a tree fell, took down some power lines, blew up a transformer, did some damage to, I think, some vehicles, but other than that, everybody was okay. And then, of course, everybody was out there on the spot, taking care of everything, got power restored, and just wanna say thanks to them, and we appreciate how fast they got on it, got everything repaired, gotta go out there and say hey to everybody. So, it was a, just a great example of how well our city takes care of its citizens.
Perfect. Thank you. And there's something else I sent over to you. Did you wanna...
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, so, yeah, I just didn't, I was like, I know, it's great. So, some good news. The city of Monroe, partnering with Habitat for Humanity, got its chip grant for thirteen point eight million in twenty twenty-five, which will help us build homes for the next, two to three homes for the next few years. So, we're pretty excited about that, and I think so, thank the city very much for partnering with Habitat for Humanity to help alleviate some of our affordable housing situations.
They, they are good folks and do a good job.
And if you haven't seen a Habitat house, you should go check one out. I bet you won't know that it's a Habitat house.
No, no kidding. Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Thompson.
District seven is all well. I do wanna touch on a little MEAG thing, since it's gonna affect the city possibly, and all forty-nine cities and counties in MEAG, it's a member of MEAG. Two weeks ago, Governmental Affairs Committee went up and visited Georgia delegation in Washington DC, just trying to remind them, as they go through the budget, not to pick the low-hanging fruit, as far as tax, tax-exempt bonds for building power plants and roads and schools and anything else that's government-related, and also our Build America Bonds that we're heavily invested in for building Plant Vogel III and IV. That, if they take that off the table, that could end up costing everybody in their utility bills, because it will be a pass-through. So, we got good support from the Georgia delegation. The only problem is, the Georgia delegation does not have anybody on Ways and Means Committee, which will make the final decision of what they will cut out of the four trillion dollar cut that they're looking to cut. So, we're just keeping an eye on that, and we're politicking it pretty heavy. And folks up in Washington, they get it. They, they know the tax-exempt bonds should, should be okay, which, you know, in, in, in MEAG's effect would be one point three billion dollars over the next thirty years. And the Build America Bonds are about sixty million dollars a year that we get a tax credit back from the federal government. So, that's kind of what's going on in the power world versus the federal government while they're looking through this budget cycle. So, just kind of wanted to keep you advised on what's going on. MEAG is working very hard with the lobbyists to make sure that these are not touched, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for doing that. That, that entire MEAG team is really, really impressive, so...
Gotta have cheap power.
Well...
And we are.
Yeah.
We've got a very good rate on power.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dickinson.
Nothing additional.
Okay. Mayoral update. I just put an article from the AJC from this weekend that says Republicans in local government are making life better for residents. Really, forget Republicans, just put local officials, because once you go through and read the article, clearly, it was, it was written from the standpoint of, hey, the Republicans somewhere did something good, but this talks about every single one of us in this room, every single one of you. And it's, it's a real, real good read. So, that's it for me. I do need, we do have an executive session, so I just need to adjourn to that. I need a motion, please.
Motion to adjourn executive session.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm.